As part of this was notified then.
That's all we want to know. I hope you guys in the future do a sewer project rather than a drainage project. It's gonna take a little longer. Give the people the opportunity to vote on it, whether they want to spend the nickel, or you're gonna, maybe you're gonna have a wet basement. I just, we feel like we had an end run us, and that, that doesn't feel good. It just doesn't.
Okay. Any other comments? There being no more comments or objections on the commissioner's report for Humboldt County Drainage District thirteen A to close this public hearing. Now, let's see, do we want to go into a, want to do a different motion first?
We have a, yeah.
We have a question here.
Okay.
On this motion, the, do you want to come up here and read this motion a little bit? You, you're looking at this, and how you got it here, you've got the twenty-third. This is the original, but it doesn't set a public hearing, a future public hearing.
Do we need to set?
And should this say the thirteenth and the twenty-third?
Do we need to set a new public hearing date for the twenty-third for?
Not for the report submitted. This, I'm sorry.
You want to have the continuation of this hearing so that the report will be filed prior to that time?
We're just worried about wording on that.
So don't close the public hearing, it's a continuation of the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then just leave it as the twenty-third, the period for filing revisions is till the twenty-third.
And my understanding is that would be your next available hearing date, or meeting date?
To get a notification, still get a notification and have it filed.
What I would suggest is that you provide that, the, any modified report be filed a certain number of days prior to the twenty-third so that people can have access to it and review it, so that when they come to the meeting on the twenty-third, they can voice any objections or comments about it. So if, uh...
Now, how about, Dave, just a question. We're gonna be submitting the report, and then they're gonna be doing a new notice for forty days later, isn't that correct?
Well... I didn't read the code that way. The way I read it was that you might, you, if you file an amended report, it's part of the continuation process of this hearing. Now, if that results in anybody having their assessment increased, that requires new notice and a new public hearing day. So, right now, I'm looking at this as a continuation of the hearing on the original report of commissioners.
Okay. Now, I feel like we know there's gonna be increases because of the lands that we can't assess. I'm just trying to think ahead of how the commissioners should meet and try and get this accomplished. It's gonna take a little time to reconsider all this yet.
Well, what I was, what I was thinking is that would it be possible for the commissioners to get it filed by the ninth?
I think so. It's under schedule.
And then, and then you have your hearing on the twenty-third.
Okay, I see.
So that people would have two weeks to look at it, come to the public hearing, and we know now that it's, if you follow my instructions, you've gotta increase somebody because of the acres that are not gonna be included. So we already know there's gonna be a public hearing. So I would suggest that you file the, any amended report by the ninth, we reconvene on the twenty-third, look at the report, hear public comments, and then set a hearing forty days or more later for the final hearing on, on everything.
Sure.
Unless you think that I'm...
No, that sounds good.
I don't know that we want to have another public hearing just to review an amended report.
True, very true.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking.
That's good, that's good. I just wanted to have it straight in my mind as far as my timing with commissioners.
Hey, let me, let me just take a look at this.
What added that second part, 'cause I was concerned about the public hearing.
Somebody actually asked me a question, and I better ask it before we adjourn.
I'm gonna continue soon.
Yeah, but not probably a good time because this is all gonna get republished. They were wondering, first, does the city pay for the publication in the newspaper, or is this news?
We're paying for it.
We're paying for it. And then the second question was, obviously, they couldn't read it because the font was so small.
To try and rein in the cost, because you're printing about twenty pages?
Yeah.
And so, no, all the publication costs are in D D thirteen. It's not, it's not a city cost, it's a D D thirteen cost, thirteen A.
Okay.
Well...
Yeah, and that's rolled back to Drainage District.
I guess what I would, I, what I would suggest somebody move is that you extend, that you give the commissioners, that you give the commissioners until September ninth to file any revisions to their report. And that you reconvene this hearing on September twenty-third as a continuation of the public hearings on the assessments. And that, and this is just a note on the side. So when they file their report, it's available to the public from the ninth to the twenty-third, so they can come in, look at it, and see if, you know, something bothers them about it or not. And if, if something doesn't bother them, then there'll be no objection. If somebody feels like they've been treated improperly, then they can come on the twenty-third and voice their objections to it, knowing we're expecting that we're gonna have a hearing, probably not until late October, early November, for the final, the absolute final hearing. Is that convoluted enough for somebody to get a motion out of that? Basically, you're extending, you're giving, you're extending, giving them until September ninth to file any revisions, and, and you're wanting a hearing, a continuation hearing on the twenty-third.
So we're not closing this public hearing?
No. We're, we're just adjourning it to a later time.
Right, gotcha.
Yeah, it's not final at all.
Right.
And any objections have to be filed by when?
They can, they can be filed at any time, you know, they can be filed between now and September twenty-third. If for some reason the assessments didn't go up, which is, they better, because that's what I'm instructing them to do. But if they didn't go up, then that hearing on the twenty-third could theoretically be the final hearing, but it's not going to be. So if they schedule this hearing for November tenth, you'll have until November tenth to file objections. You always have the right to file objections until it's final hearing.
And then once it's final, if you're still objecting, that's when you have to go to the district court?
That's when you appeal, yeah.
And you would file that up here at the courthouse, like at the auditor's office?
Clerk and auditor. I don't want to start giving legal advice, because I don't want people to rely upon my advice on how to challenge the district. I don't want anybody accusing me that I advise them incorrectly or not. If you want to challenge it, I have to advise you to get independent legal counsel to advise you of your rights, because obviously there's a conflict. So, that's why I'm hesitant to start issuing out advice on how to...
But if we took it up to the courthouse, that's the right place to go?
Yes.
Okay. They would know.
So do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I move that we give the commissioners till September ninth to make a revision to their reports. And we reconvene on the twenty-third.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. We need a motion to adjourn this session of Drainage District thirteen A, trustees at six-ten P M.
Some moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We need a motion to reconvene as a Humboldt City Council it, six-eleven P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Now I'm gonna leave side kinker cost down as much as possible. Me too.
We're not, we're not paying you, Rick.
Yeah, that's, that's true, that's true.
All right, let me get up for a minute. On our unfinished business, we're gonna discuss the addition of the on-street parking spaces, specifically personal disabilities on Sumner Avenue. What else?
This is third time's a charm here. The engineer looked at the handicap spots as they were installed, and he advised that the spots be moved back to the old positions due to individuals being placed in the travel portion of the street to access ramps. We've also had some business owners who have expressed their concerns with the loss of spots on Sumner Avenue. John, I think you had some thoughts on that, too.
Well, hey, you know, I walked, I walked Sumner Avenue, and I apologize, I was gone at the last meeting, and I didn't realize that we were actually swapping, getting rid of one and adding two on Main Street. And I realized that it takes the right side of the vehicle to get the handicapped person out. But directly across the street, in front of, well, it used to be the H and R, I don't know if they're still there or not, H and R block building, directly across the street to the east, there's a spot where there's a fire hydrant that nobody can park. And if we took one spot there, you could do it there. You can move it back around the corner where it was, and, and they have access, you know, to the, to the ramps with one spot versus two spots. And there's another spot right across the street with a fire hydrant that sits in front of the bank, that would take one handicap spot, you know, and, and have the van accessible to the right side that's already blocked off, because I believe there's a fire hydrant there, too. And to me, you know, I, I think we probably should have investigated this a little bit more before we did what we did, and, and I just, you know, I've had a lot of complaints from people on Main Street, on that block, particularly hairdressers, bars. We took two spots away versus one. And the meetings before, we talked about one for one. And I'm a hundred percent for the disabled and handicapped, but I think we also have to take care of our other citizens, too. And the fact that to get to a handicap ramp, they have to go out in the lane of traffic around the van to get to the corner, I think puts them at more risk than they were before. I guess that's my feeling on it anyway, guys. We have a lot of handicap spots on Main Street, which is great, you know, and, and one sign would, would take care of that corner, that business corner, with the way it's set up other than the way it is right now.
It's your recommendation from the engineers is to go back to the way we were.
Yeah, he said that when you look at, when you look at, well, the recommendations for ADA is always a moving target, getting more restrictive and more restrictive every single time. He said, I don't think that you're necessarily exposing yourself to somebody's, you know, complaining about, you know, access because of the handicap person. He said, I think there's a liability situation where if somebody gets, you know, struck when they're using your handicap spot that you've installed, and they're being put in the travel portion, that there's a liability issue there. And so, he said, you know, that, that his recommendation would be to, to move it back to the old spot, just for the, for that reason alone. You know, they, he said that's, that, that the access to getting off, off the street needs to be closer than that.
So what we have done?
Well, then...
We need, we made, we made a motion to change. We need a motion to unchange, or what do we, or, or what do we need to do?
Need a motion to go back to the old...
A motion to return it to the original...
Return it to the original spot.
State, maybe, the original locations.
Is there any chance of looking at John's idea, or has that been discussed with the engineer at all?
What, to put it on the, the opposite side? The only thing, the only problem that there, that exists is whether you, how, is putting it into the travel portion, that, and then obviously the consideration for business owners on, you know, loss of spots and things like that. So, I mean, if you want, we can...
I guess I would, you know, I guess I would make a motion that we, we move it back to, to where we had it before, where there was one spot, but there was access on the right side of the handicap van to, there's a ramp right there. And I think maybe the complaint was it's a little steep there or something.
The one by Dollar General is too steep to get into a van, like, to, for a person on a wheelchair to step up into it, it's too steep for a ramp. And the one over, on the other side, that was moved by Doc Willse, that one there, when you drop a ramp, you can't get a person in it because the ramp is too close to the curb. You have to back up into traffic in order to get a person into the vehicle.
What about the one across the street to the east? There is no handicap spot there now, but there's a place for a van to unload there.
You talking about the bank?
Nope, I'm talking about the, where H and R block was, or...
Don't you run into the same problem, then you going back around the van?
No, you wouldn't be.
You're on the right side.
You'd be on the right side of the van, and, I mean, there's all kinds of...
Across the street from Dollar General, there you go?
No, no. Across the street...
Daniel crossing the bank.
Across the street from the hearing aid place to the east.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's a big area there, I mean, it's, it's, it's like a parking spot blocked off because of the hybrid that's there. I guess my only objection is, you know, we, you know, we took two parking spots, and we've got other areas that would only take actually one parking spot because the, the exit is already there.
I understand that.
You know.
Do you want me to take a look at those other spots and see what, what the thoughts are on whether we can fit it in there only using one spot and still have it not expose the city to any liability for those?
For now, I think we want to go back to where we look at something else, correct?
Yeah.
Let's look at something else.
We have, we're go back, but...
What, what about the Dollar General spot?
I, I, you know, I didn't even look at that one, because we didn't change that one.
We didn't.
Oh, you did? Oh, I was gone at the last meeting.
That's, that's where we're going on, the travel portion of Iowa.
Well, you are at the other one, too, in the Willse.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't even look at that one, I didn't realize that was new.
So, to return both of those, and then look at what other options?
To me, there's, there's just better options that, you know, that, that are available than, than what we did.
So your motion is to change them both back to the way they were?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
And we're gonna study John's suggestions.
Okay, study other spots, yeah.
Hi. Did you ask for votes?
Yeah, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, and we'll look at the other options then, and come back next time, we have recommendations for that then. All right?
Okay.
On our new business before Stan falls this week. Sumner Avenue Bridge aesthetics presentation from W H K S.
Good evening. My name's Dan Stolzmann, and I've been here before, so I'm just gonna talk about Sumner Avenue Bridge. And the main point of this meeting is to talk about the aesthetics. The main part of this presentation is to talk about aesthetics, but I also wanted to...
Can you see general?
There's a couple, I kinda want to go through the list of things I want to talk about. I kinda wanted to update you on the schedule and the project status, and just briefly go over the history. We'll look at the aesthetic options, and the cost of those options, and then we'll have some, an opportunity at the end for questions and answers and comments. And actually, I've got a few questions for you, too, to get a little bit of a direction for you guys, for, from the city. So first of all, the project history. In June of two thousand ten, we did a feasibility study to look at either replacing or repairing the bridge. Came up with the option to replace it. We did preliminary design, which was completed in March of two thousand eleven, and then there was no funding available, so the project got put on hold. Now the project's come back to life because of November, the city received, noticed that they were able to, they did receive funding. In January, W H K S updated the preliminary design, and, and then in March, the city entered into an agreement with the F H W A, or the state, to do the, to, to accept the funding. Okay, now, just the project status, go through these real quick. These are just cer- certain steps that need to be addressed during the design phase. There's a concept statement which we've submitted, we submitted preliminary plans, and based on the preliminary plans and the concept statement, there's a list of things that, that brings to, to different departments and different agencies, and, and one of them is the State Historical Preservation Office, they've cleared the project, the Army Corps of Engineers has cleared the project, the Environmental Protection Agency has cleared the project, and the Iowa D O T has reviewed our hydraulic calculations, and they've cleared the project. The one that, item that is not cleared yet is the Iowa D N R. I talked to a person who's reviewing that, and it is on her list, it just hasn't, she hasn't gotten to our project yet. So she expected maybe in the next few weeks she would be able to clear that also. And I didn't expect that to be an issue, because we've already got through that once with the previous project, we just had to update the permits, but it just needs to go through the system, get through their, their list. Okay, so now the, what's next? The project schedule, we're working on the design right now, and we're creating the plans. Check plans for the project are due on October second, and final plans, then the D O T will do their review, and any comments they have, we need to incorporate them into the final plans. And those final plans are to be submitted on October twenty-third of this year, and that is based on a letting date of January twenty-second. And that, the schedule then is to, so the construction could begin in the spring and will be completed by the fall of two thousand and fourteen. The, uh, spring construction, you know, with the January letting, hopefully then they get all their documentation in, the contractor will get all their paperwork done, and they'll be probably ready to go late February or early March. And the D O T does not begin charging working days until April, but that'll give them an opportunity, if they, if the weather's good, they could maybe shut down the, the street in, in March sometime and begin demolition of the old bridge sometime in March. Weather doesn't work out, then it'll be in April.
What do you, what do you mean by charging days? They, good days that they can close a, a bridge, or what?
Yeah, they, when the, when a, a project, any kind of, well, most construction projects are done based on an estimated number of working days. Actually, it's a well-defined number of working days that the contractor's given to complete the project. The D O T will determine how many working days it'll be, and that typically, it's like, this project might be, oh, I'm not even sure, but it might be like, say, two hundred working days, just for, as an example, that's five, it's a, they could, they, any day that they work, they, they cannot work on Sundays, but so they could work six days a week until they use up their two hundred working days, and the D O T, through their scheduling process, they'll estimate how many they expect it will take to do this project, and then assign that many working days to the project. The thing is that they, the D O T will only charge working days from like April fifteenth till October thirty-first, I believe. Any time that the contractor could work outside of that, they could do the work without being charged a working day. And so the benefit of that for them is that, you know, they may say, well, the D O T's only gonna let me do two hundred working days, I know I'm gonna spend more than that, so if I can get started in March, and I can get most of the bridge removed before they start charging me working days, then I'm a little bit ahead of the schedule, basically. So, um, okay, so the next thing is the aesthetics, it's really the meat of the, what I wanted to talk to you about tonight. And I'm gonna go over a few things that we talked about last time I was here, just the, you know, basic principles of aesthetics, and I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, 'cause we've already talked about them, but the main thing I want you to understand is that the Iowa D O T has, in recent years, kind of shifted to putting a little more emphasis on the aesthetics. And, or, or if you want to emphasize the aesthetics, basically, they're, they're okay with that, they will participate in the cost of the aesthetics when you see funding through the state. So they have their own website, and they have, they talk about what they want to do on the, on the, on there, they, they want to be proactive, and they want the struc- the cities, the communities to have an opportunity to, to do aesthetics if they'd like to. And there's a couple of quotes I shared with you last time, just pull up there, I think, this is right off their website, says, "In most cases, the replacement of a signature historic bridge will result in some consideration of design enhancement of the new bridge. The Iowa D O T recognizes that historic bridges have intrinsic value to the communities in which they are situated." And while this bridge is not on the list of historic bridges, it certainly has been around for a long time, and it is a unique structure, so they, they would definitely look at allowing the use of aesthetics in this bridge. And then the next quote from the same source is, you know, "Making simple decisions early on can make bridges more attractive. A minor addition to the construction budget can take an everyday bridge and turn it into a unique, something unique and special." So those are the, kind of the guiding principles for looking at aesthetics. If the city would like to do it, then the D O T is all for helping you come up with what you want to do, and, and then helping you pay for it. So now how do we arrive at what we want to do on each specific bridge? When we look at the site considerations, and again, I won't spend a great deal of time on this, 'cause we talked about it a little bit last time, but we look at the existing bridge, and is there anything about the bridge that we'd like to duplicate, or, or kind of, you know, remember in some fashion? Or we look at around the bridge, and in this case, these two pictures are just of the, you know, the, the rock outcroppings on the east, east side of the bridge, and the, another one of the rock outcroppings, and then just the area around, there's some older buildings that, in the neighborhood, you know, do you want to like duplicate the colors or the stone, or anything like that from around there? We also look, you know, downstream, the old Lewis Street Bridge is, the remnants of that are still in place, and obviously there was a, used some limestone block to, for the construction of that. And then more newer things in the neighborhood, the Big No Park, some recent additions there, and we want to somehow tie into that, what's going on around the bridge with the new aesthetics. So how do we do that? What features do we look at in the bridge? Well, the things we look at are the railing and the fence, do you want to do some concrete form liner, colored sealer on the concrete, lighting, and then I added one from, right last time I was here, an overlook, that we could, that you decide what you want to do with that. So, the railing and the fence, it's probably the most visible thing, it's what people see when they drive down the street, they ever see it from the side. And the old bridge, you can see, was, it was very noticeable, this is the other view of that, I've, the background picture had it, too, but basically, there is these large concrete solid posts with a, like a, kind of a concrete picket fence, if you will, in between those posts. And so what do we do with the options that we want to replace that railing? And I had presented, or kind of, we had sketched up a, kind of a hybrid railing last time I was here, and since then, I've been discussing the railing options with the, the Office of Bridges and Structures, and I've been informed that, that, they didn't say that we couldn't use what I was presenting, but they said that it's not a crash-tested option, and so they, they would recommend that we look at something that has already been crash-tested. Now, we weren't changing it very much, they're not saying that they wouldn't accept it, we could go through the process and have them look at it, but what, basically, there's a couple of options, two, two railing that I kinda wanted to show you, and we can, one of them is just a standard, Iowa D O T standard open rail, which is what you see in that picture there. And this is, you know, it's generally used for lower volume roads, or in, in a local setting where you can, you know, a lot of times municipalities like this, or counties like this, 'cause they can push the snow through it, it doesn't build up on the bridge, and it's a more open rail, it looks, you know, it's, allows light through, and this is what it looks like going down the road, you can see the open post, and it's still a pretty massive rail on the top. The second option that I was directed to by the aesthetics engineer at the D O T is a, it's a Texas D O T standard, and they call it their classic railing, and I'm not sure the, where this one originated from, or why they came up with it, but I was told that Iowa has been using this type of rail for probably the last ten years as an option for replacing probably just the type of railing that you guys have here in town on the Sumner Bridge. It's similar to that, in that it's got these concrete openings, and it's got some solid posts in between. This bridge here, maybe you guys have been there or familiar with it, it's a bridge over in Goldfield, I didn't know how, how long ago this has been built, but I think it's relatively new. It's on Cedar Street over the Boone River in Goldfield. And that's, this is just a view of that bridge, looking down the road, you can, you know, you see the open, the open rail, and, you know, it, it's also has colored sealer on it, too, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So those are kind of the two options that we're looking at, and I'll show you what our recommendations are. of the two options that we're looking at. And I'll show you what our recommendations are when we get to the end of the presentation. But, so, the other side of the, the, the bridge is where we've got the separation rail on the sidewalk. And we gotta look at, what are we gonna do there? And this is what you've got now. And I'm pretty sure we can improve on the aesthetics of that.
Really?
It's, uh, obviously, it's been, it's well-worn. And this is just a view looking down the rail and the fence. So what do we, what are the options there? And again, I go back to the Goldfield Bridge, which has that, they used that Texas rail as the separation rail, and then they used a, kind of a black picket fence on the outside. The, if it's considered a trail, the height of the separation rail has to be, be three and a half feet above the sidewalk. If it's not a trail, if it's just a sidewalk, you don't have to, it doesn't have to be three and a half feet, it only has to be, actually, twenty-four inches off of the, the sidewalk. But they recommend at least, uh, the, they, they recommend at least twenty-seven inches, I think, above the sidewalk. I don't know, there, it's pretty, it's not very tall. But anyway, what they, the way they address that here in Goldfield was they added this steel rail on top of the concrete rail. You can also, there's a, a different standard for the concrete rail that is three and a half feet tall. So you can just use that, and not put the steel rail on top of it. And then the fence on the outside also has to be three and a half feet tall, as a minimum, according to Federal Highway Administration or ASTO. But the DOT, actually, if it were a state highway, they would, they, their minimum recommendation is four and a half feet. So, and that's...